Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Carrie Callens.
Let's stand for the colors first.
We are honored to have the Tansville Parish Young Marines present the colors this afternoon. We are here as an invitation from the Honorable Mr. Randy Bush, who have given us the opportunity. These young men and women, they represent the Tansville Parish Sheriff's Department, Young Marines. And after the pledge, you may take your seat. And Colleen, Private First Class, Colleen Vernon, my nine-year-old daughter, will be coming to render a song.
Forward, march, left, 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 right, left. March time, march, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left. Detail, halt. Left, face. Please, please don't be anticipating the pledge of the leave. I pledge the oath of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arm, hold, colors. Forward, march, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left. Detail, halt. Hold, colors. Present, arms. Order, arms. Right, face. Forward, march.
If tomorrow the things were gone, I'd hope for all my life. And I had to start again with my family by my side. I thank my God above to be living here today. Cause the flags that stand for freedom and they can't take that away. And I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up and execute under fingers still today. Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless to you, I say. From the lakes of Minnesota to the hills of Tennessee. Across the plains of Texas, from sea to shining sea. From the Detroit's down to Houston, and from New York to LA. There's a pride in every American heart, so it's time to stand up and say. And I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up and execute under fingers still today. Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless to you, I say.
Mr. Marvin, I know you're proud and we're thankful for you doing that. Mr. Bush, thank you for putting that together.
Well, I would like to say that I don't know if Daniel Edwards is here. I know he can make it tonight, but he said he was gonna try on behalf of Daniel Edwards. And the program that he has, the Tansville Parish Sheriff's Department, Young Marines. And my son has entered the program. He's not able to be here tonight, but I really appreciate you guys, Sergeant Marvin. And Sergeant, still raise your hand back there, cause he is shouting, cause I believe he's...
Thank you again, Sergeant Vernon. Roll call. We keep you guessing tonight.
Mr. Richards.
Present.
Mr. Tolliver.
Here.
Mr. Abel.
Here.
Mr. Westmoreland.
Present.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Meeks.
Present.
Thank you. Consider approval of board minutes from February 6, 2020. Do I hear that in form of a motion?
Move to adopt them.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Westmoreland, seconded by Ms. Simmons. Online voting is open when she says it is. I said, when she says it is. I clarified.
Online voting is now open. Is everybody attached to final vote? Voting is closed. Motion absent.
Okay, motion carried.
Yes, sir.
Okay, presentation of Mr. Duncan, "So Long Farewell" by the Hammond Eastside Magnet IB World School Students.
Board and audience, I'm very glad and proud to present to you guys our company ensemble from Hammond Eastside Magnet School. They have an upcoming performance of the Sound of Music that will be performed at the Columbia Theater on March the 12th and 13th. Tickets are still available, but I'm sure going very, very fast would encourage everyone to take advantage of seeing these students perform. We started doing performing arts magnet theme at Hammond Eastside probably 10 years ago, Lamar, does that sound about right? And just, they have gotten progressively better each and every year. And I'm so looking forward to seeing this performance this year, so I hope you guys will go check it out. They will be singing two songs tonight. One by the entire ensemble, "So Long Farewell." And then our two, two of our main stars will be singing favorite things. Amaya Griffin and Annabelle Wilson will be singing that song. And then I'll let our staff introduce the rest of the ensemble. Okay?
(music)
Mr. Scott, Mr. Scott, can y'all just introduce the rest of our cast that was here real quick?
One of them looked familiar.
So, the members of the Von Trapp family that were just singing for you, well, let me see if I can spot them. Riley Powell is playing Kurt. Jalen Jackson playing Friedrich. Kendall Duncan playing Brigitte. Cody, did you go? Cody Ross playing Marta. Landry Louvier playing Gretel. And Cadence Lanier playing Liesl. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. And so if we could just have, I see my beautiful wife back there in the yellow. She's here with my daughter Kendall. But any other family members that are here with your children from Hammond Eastside or any staff members? If you would just stand up. I know all of these children are working really hard after school every day to get ready for this performance. Thank you, guys, and again, please go make sure you get your tickets and support our program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Thank you, Eastside. Tonight, we also have a Jake Bailey Above and Beyond Award presented by Ms. Simmons. Turn it over to her.
To help me present this award, I'd like to call up C.C. Lanier and Melissa Ryan. Both of them or one of them? I know we saw C.C. Okay. Okay. And the person receiving the NSF Jake Bailey Above and Beyond Award for tonight is Rosa Campbell, the Federal Programs Office Assistant. Would she come up, please? Rosa, we'd like to present to you the NSF Jake Bailey Above and Beyond Award. Cause you've gone above and beyond from what I've understood. And we'd like for these others to be part of the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, I named nominated Rosa because she truly goes above and beyond. She works in Title I and I don't know if you know anything about Title I, but it's very strict. You have to follow certain rules. You have to do everything precisely a certain way. And if you know me, I don't always do that. So Rosa saves my life all the time. I have to call her all the time. I'm like, can you walk me through it one more time? And I don't know if on the other side of the phone, she might be rolling her eyes or writing stuff about me. But I picture her just smiling. I mean, look how beautiful she is. I picture her with this beautiful smile, just every time I call her, she's like, no, what can I do for you? Oh, let me just show you one more time. Remember last time? And she's just so helpful and patient and kind. And I just really, she makes my job so much easier and I just appreciate everything you do for me.
I have the delight of working with Rosa all the time. And it's an honor for someone outside of our department to nominate a staff member. That shows us that we know that we're meeting the school community and the compassionate be great and be respectful. Rosa does that with everybody. So it's a delight for me to know that what she's presenting to our school community is something that can be honored. And she is. She's a good face to have on our staff, so we really enjoy having her. And no, you cannot have her.
Would you like to show it to them? Would you like to introduce who's here with you?
Okay.
All right, she's going to recognize who's here to opt out.
I would like to introduce my sister Tracy. My Aunt Pamela, she works at Amy High School. Her daughter Jalen. And my friend Laquisha.
Congratulations. Go do a picture.
All right, now to our Students of the Year for 2020. Ask Ms. Tillman if she would come up. We are so proud of these students and we're glad to recognize them tonight. And we thank everybody that came out to support them as well.
Thank you. Good evening. It is such a pleasure. These are, this is a special event. So it's always great to come up and have positive news to share about the community. Because we are so fortunate to have so many exceptional students who are not only scholars, but leaders within their community. So, therefore, it gives me great pride to announce the 2020 Student of the Year winners. We're going to begin with 5th grade. If I could have Mr. Jinko to come up and help. So when I call your name, please come up and receive your certificate. Makasia Dyson, from Amy Westside Middle Magnet School. Lucy Ray Crissoni Chesbro Elementary School. Jason Dixon, Greenville Park Leadership Academy. Your Majesty Garrett, Hammond Eastside Magnet School. Joan Joshua, Hammond Westside Montessori School. Elisha Saragusa, Independence Magnet School. Riley Young, Laranja Middle School. Aliana Robertson, Lucille Nisa Memorial School. Aiden Vasquez, Natavany Middle School. Madison Finch, Roseland Montessori School. Violet Sandifer, SLU Lab School. Holly Blades, Spring Creek Elementary School. Bryce Jenkins, Martha Vineyard Elementary School. And our 5th grade 2020 Student of the Year for the district is Joan Joshua, Hammond Westside Montessori School. Please give our 5th grade students another round of applause. Next up, our 8th grade winners. Haley Brumfield, Amy Westside Middle Magnet School. Quinesha McGowan, Greenville Park Leadership Academy. Amaya Griffin, Hammond Eastside Magnet School. Alexis Ziegler, Hammond Westside Montessori School. Brandon Guloda Jr., Independence Magnet School. Isaiah Martin, Kentwood High Magnet School. Laura Li Gotrow, Laranja Middle School. Brandon Ferguson, Lucille Nisa Memorial School. Kyrie Ambrose, Natavany Middle School. Cadence Myers, Ponchatula Junior High School. Laney Saragusa, Roseland Montessori School. Ella Grace Thompson, SLU Lab School. Breland Bridges, Sumner Middle School. And our 2020 8th grade district winner is Amaya Griffin, Hammond Eastside Magnet School. And please give our 8th grade scholars another round of applause. Last but not least, our 12th grade Students of the Year. Alexia Richardson, Amy High School. Maggie Tillu, Hammond High Magnet School. Koi Bayham, Independence High Magnet School. Sky Holmes, Kentwood High Magnet School. Briannon Tony, Laranja High School. Maria Guai, Ponchatula High School. Victoria Verbain, Sumner High School. And our 2020 12th grade district Student of the Year winner is Maggie Tillu, Hammond High Magnet School.
We know it takes a village, so if you're here tonight to support one of these students, would you please stand, family and faculty? Thank you for participating and thank you for supporting them. I'd like to ask, we'll take a five-minute recess so we can congratulate our students.
Meeting call back to order. Next item of business, item three, capital outlay of the whole committee from February 6, 2020. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
Move to adopt. Motion made by Mr. Duncan to adopt.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Westverland. Voting when Ms. Cindy says vote.
This is not tied into, to the whole system. Yeah. I think that's tied into these.
Motion carries. Item four. Ms. Superintendent.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a general update, today, we hosted Leadership Tenshah Pahoe at our new registration center in Hammond. So we had quite a group there. We were able to just update them on some key happenings here in the school system. On Thursday, at 4 o'clock, we'll have our parent meeting, another parent meeting, a parent advisory meeting. And we have already had items submitted by some of the committee members. So, you know, we invite parents to come out to that and we'll start it at 4, a little later to accommodate working parents from 4 to 6 on Thursday. And that's all the updates I have this week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Personal privilege, I think this time we start with, we started with you last time, didn't we, Mr. Jerry? Ms. Robin?
I'm just saying that we had a great last three days at our conference in Baton Rouge. We've taken home a bunch of knowledge, hope to be able to implement what we were taught this week and looking forward to better, to better understand what all of our rules and regulations are.
Absolutely. Ms. Richards? Ms. Duncan? Ms. Simmons?
Tark Radiothon on March the 4th. Give me the money. Show it to me. Anyway, I'm collecting and so I really would appreciate you contributing to these special needs students and individuals. So, March the 4th and we'll be on the radio at 8 or 10 this time.
Eight.
Eight?
It's going to be 8 to 6 on TNGI 96.5.
And the Bailey family has opened up for, I don't know how many years, what, many, many years.
Many, many years. And we don't argue with her, we just give her that spot.
But anyway, way before my time on the board. And so we're going to open up that day.
Mr. Bush?
I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Abrams said about the conference. It was really great. We had a wonderful time listening to speakers tell us about all the new changes that are coming and things that are coming for legislation. Our governor came and spoke to us and kind of explained some of the budget issues that are coming down the pike and I was really glad to get firsthand knowledge of that. And we appreciate him taking time out of his schedule to come and speak to us. We do have a great coalition of principals and teachers' unions and retired teachers and also our, our other superintendents group as well was present. So we thank those people for coming and sharing knowledge of the other organizations with us. It means a lot that we work together as a big coalition. And so Ms. Jenkins, I guess what I would need to do is enter into the minutes so that we can get our CLUs. Mr. Westmoreland, Mr. Moore, Ms. Robin, Mr. Toller, Ms. Janice, Ms. Simmons and myself were present for the work conference. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention too is our brand-new parent center down in Hammond where we're going to have the registration for our students and the parent center, the migrants, we're hosting the migrant area, the homeless area is a great facility and we're so proud that they got moved in. We were able to tour that this past week. And as a board, which I think I still have to get a couple of people's money, but the board went together and we bought a big banner that they're going to hang in there because they're doing different themes throughout the building and they had asked us if we would be interested in helping to do that. And so we took up a little bit of money and we bought this big banner and they're going to hang it in there with our names beside it that we donated it. And so if you have an opportunity to go by the Hammond, the new center there by the Walgreens by the mall, it's really wonderful and you can see the banner that we donated.
Mr. Westverland?
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate to the public that on our Facebook and on our website, now we have steps to resolve school-related issues. So anybody that has an issue with that can go online and look at the steps it's going to take to resolve any issues that might arise in our school system to help it become more friendly.
Mr. Moore?
Okay, and I want to just continue to be a consistent reminder for all of the teachers that love conquers all. Adopt your class. A child learns better when they think you care.
Thank you.
One thing we did not, we failed to mention.
I'll listen to you.
Oh, were you? Nope, not that. Our superintendent's birthday was yesterday, so we're three days of celebrating her birthday. So we wanted to say happy birthday to our superintendent, Ms. Melissa Stilly.
Finally 35.
Finally.
Yeah, we also want to reiterate the conference was great. The classes are always informational and learn more about bonding and that kind of stuff than I really wanted to. But also, it's the networking of other boards and other superintendents and talking about vocational possibilities and talking about all these other issues that come up that we're not alone in some of these things. I do want to commend, we have two schools right now that have plans in place for vocational activity within the school that's going to include the students participating with the public and selling a product. So hats off to them and I want to encourage the other schools to take that as a challenge to catch up. We need to grow this idea of bringing business and industry into our schools, continuing to bring. We do a lot of that already, but we need to continue to build on that and actually put some things in place to actually put some learning in place of what they've been learning to put it in practice. So I commend Ms. Fassell, Ms. Carly Cooper and the other ones that are working with us on that and hopefully we'll see some big strides moving forward. Also want to publicly commend our legal team and our board on the consent agreement in the New Orleans Federal Court last week. Is that right? Yeah, last week. That's not a work of just one board, that's several boards, that's several employees, that's administrations, that's superintendents, that's community. That was a big win for everyone and everyone should be commended on that. Now it's a matter of moving forward within the consent agreement to do what we say we're going to do and continue to improve our schools. So I want to publicly commend Ms. Stilly, her leadership in this, Ms. Bass and all the other ones that worked so hard, Mr. Gideon and everyone else that made this possible. Good things ahead for Tenshah Pahoe School System and I'm looking forward to it. And I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Stilly.
I don't have anything else.
No comments?
We have another birthday this week.
I think Dr. Hurst has a birthday Thursday. Is that right?
34?
Yeah, he's, he's some 25.
Happy birthday to you.
Anyway, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Dr. Hurst.
Yes, thank you, that's it.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Ms. Richards, I thought I told you, you needed to give up your report tonight. What's your problem? Now, I'm surprised, I gave you orders to do that and you're not, you're not giving a report.
Hey, Ms. Janice, tell her she's not the president.
Ms. Andrew. Yeah. Did you not just attend the conference where they told you about bullying?
Yeah, but I didn't listen too well. We did some role-playing after it was over out in the hall. We said we were going to do that tonight. About bullying people that, your employers and it was really good. We learned a lot there.
So, Dr. Hurst, did you pay attention to that?
With that being said, motion to adjourn? So move. Thank y'all.